All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this January meeting of Valleys County's zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Everyone in attendance will please make sure and sign in on the attendance sheet at the back of the room. Before we begin, I will explain the process for the meeting. I will call each case on a case-by-case name and case number. The city or county representing the staff will come to the lectern and present the facts of the case. After the presentation, the board may or may not ask staff questions. Once the board has heard the case and asked all questions necessary of staff, we will move to hearing from either the applicant or the applicant's representation. After hearing from the applicant, we will hear from anyone else who wishes to express support for the case. Finally, we will hear from anyone who wishes to express opposition to the case. Anyone addressing the board will please come to the lectern and give their name and address for the record. For clarity and respect, we ask that only the person at the lectern address the board and that the audience give them an uninterrupted chance to be heard. If there's any important information that you feel we need to consider, then please come to the lectern when it is your turn and you are called. In the interest of time, though, the board asks that you keep your comments brief and to the point. Please do not come to the lectern only to restate the same information that we have already heard from someone else. Once the board has had the chance to hear from all sides on the matter and ask any questions we feel necessary, then we will render a decision. If we do not, if we feel that we do not have the necessary information available to render a decision today, then we may decide to table the case for the next meeting. Please be aware that this board is here today only to address various applications to the zoning codes for Valleys County and City of Austin. This is the only matter on which this board has been given the power to render a decision. We cannot and do not have the power to address any other matters that are not covered by the zoning codes of Valleys County and the City of Austin. Now, we will hear the first item, APP 2019-09 Lawton White, 318 Eager Road. Tracy, you have the lecture.
Good afternoon. This case in front of you is from Mr. Lawton White. It revolves around 318 Eager Road, which is about acre and a half, Zone R15, just down the street from Northfield Drive, across from Folwood Circle, D1. The property is Zone R15, which is a single-family residential, contains a single-family residence and a duplex, which is a topic of discussion, the reason why Mr. White is here, towards the rear of the property as well as the accessory structure for the property as well. The reason is for why he's here, like I said, the property is Zone R15, which is a single-family residential, and lots of single-family houses, obviously addressing a lot of duplexes. The duplex, staff believes, we're not sure when the duplex was built, but we believe it to be a big help product made up of the county W records. This used to be in the county, but as part of the renovation, A's in 2000, the property was adopted as in the city, which is effective in early 2006. Included the use of duplex, made of use of the building without the patch. The problem here is the duplex has lost the use of the duplex. The structure is still standing, but it hasn't been used as a duplex number here. If it's not used as within a year, it means that it's non-conforming use. So a P-L-A, which is what Mr. White is asking for, a P-L-A is a way for an applicant to ask to use it as a non-conforming use again. It's a previously existing plan, used as a form of a certificate, a P-L-A for sure. So basically, what Mr. White is asking is to be able to use the duplex and the duplex again. You can see the house on the property as well as the duplex and part of the accessory structure. Adjacent property, single-family. Happy New Year. Basically, staff reviewed the case. We realized that it operated as a duplex for years, if not decades, and made little impact on adjacent properties. It is a large lot, acre and a half, R15, requires about a third of a acre minimum, lots, fifty thousand square feet. So the lot is simple enough to accommodate both a single-family residence and the duplex. Staff looked at it, we rendered an approval with two conditions. The first being that the duplex building may not be enlarged or expanded, and shall not be occupied more than two residents each for a total of four residents, and that the existing vegetation buffer along with the northern and eastern property lines shall remain under the shop. Any questions?
I've got one.
Sure.
Do you know when the duplex was last used?
No, I just wanted to get one more.
I have a question. Is there some reason why you wouldn't want to have a little family in one of those? Why only two people? Why not mom, dad, and a baby?
We understand, it's a balance in that. We understand that this is a single-family residence and to try to minimize the impact of on a multifamily development, for lack of a better word, that condition is very applicable. So yes.
And the property that's immediately adjacent to this is zoned for a, that skinny one between it and Jaden Place, that's a zone for...
It's PRV10, which is one of our, it's a front bike. The neighbors usually have a plan developed.
Yeah, well, not, that's recent, that plan development on that skinny bit, because I think that we were something...
R10. Lot to the east is R10. 316 Eager Road to the east is R10.
That's anyone, that's to Jaden. That's showing PD.
It's a PD.
Next to Jaden, that's in between.
Yeah.
That's to the east, that's R10. It's, on that map, it's a similar color, but you see the R10 neighborhood in the lower left, with the matching, the green is yellow color. 316 Eager Road was rezoned from R15 to R10.
Okay.
Three or four years ago.
That's my memory. Okay, thank you.
Across the street where it's a little more green, that's PRV10, twenty-five years ago.
Any other question?
Thank you. Would the applicant or the applicant's representation like to address the board?
I mean, I can, I appreciate the good job of explaining it, but I would be happy to answer your questions. I'm also amazing in regards to, when I bought the property, my paperwork is in there, I think maybe April or June of 2018, at that time, there was people living in the duplex, you know? One of them was living there, a Boston guy, there was a guy in some trouble, he lived up in Athens, on an expired lease, and he was still living there and not paying rent, and the other lady had just now got access to the property. So there was people living in there when I, when I purchased it, because I had to go through, to be able to file and, and do the eviction and charge them trespassing, to get them, police department out there and get them removed, by the way. But other than that, you know, I'm not looking to add-on, rezonate, build a bunch of houses, nothing like that. All I want to do is just be able to use the property that, as what was indicated, and what I spent about sixty-three thousand dollars between the house and the duplexes, you know, as I bought, you know, that's cleared there, personal for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and I've got two-hundred thousand dollars in the property to be able to rent it. So that's all I'm looking to, no expansion, add-on, anything like that, but I would be happy to answer your question.
I have that same question for you. Are you okay with the condition of no more than two residents, so not mom, dad, and a baby in the apartment?
Well, certainly, that, you know, to say like, you know, three would be, would be nice, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to just be nice, be cordial, and not, not make this a big ordeal. Now, two does, does kind of limit it, but, you know, we will work, you know how it is. I mean, partly from my point of view, I'm wondering why I paid four, five-hundred-and-thirty dollars for this permit and why all this is in there. It's clearly in the, a public tax code that is called apartments, so it's not like this is a bribe, I, you know, I'm not a big person to the government getting involved in your business, but you got to play by the rules, you know, so I'm to play by the rules, all I know to say. Appreciate you interest, if we do it, three, of course, that helps me, but I'm not going to jump on that either way.
Do you see this as being more DSU student kind of stuff, or do you...
Well, you know, who are you aiming at? Well, just good renters, just, right now, I am leasing, like, to someone, to a group, and they, you know, they're, they're taking care of that for me. But of course, you know, I've spent a lot of money on the project, the neighbors will tell you that, you know, this was not hooked up to city water or sewer, he had a pump out there, according to one of the neighbors, you know, the previous owner had been dumping his washing machine and dryer on his property, you know, all that's been changed, we've hooked up, so, and, you know, and I've gone through the new flooring, new painting, so, you know, I'm not, we're not putting scum to the earth in there, just, you know, we're trying to, to, I think, anyone would say that the property has been improved drastically since the time I bought it.
Mr. White, staff has made recommendations to approve your petition. Based on those two conditions, and I assume that's why she asked, she only asked about one, are you okay with both of those conditions?
Sure, sure. Yeah, we found the buffer and all that kind of stuff.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Is anybody else here in favor of this case and would like to speak or address the board? No? Is anybody here in opposition to this case? Saw your hand first, full start there. Would you please give your name and address for our record?
Yes, sir, Deb Cops, 318 Crescent Drive, and it's just right around the corner from the parking. I noticed the answer wasn't given completely to the question, who you're leasing to, and I heard leasing to a group. That would not be a halfway house for felons, would it?
Well, no, it's not for felons, no, I mean, it's not for felons. Let me just address that. I don't think it's a problem at all. I rent some properties in certain areas to Greenleaf, and this is the people that have reached a certain accountability standard, that maybe still going to Alcoholics Anonymous or whatever, and so I rent those properties, and this is not one of those, but two of the people that were licensed in that, didn't you in that space, and deal with that kind of stuff, approached me, and they wanted to have a property, and already had some property that were leasing to those type of individuals. Now, to me, I don't know if any of the neighbors would say that they've had a problem, these people, they have a person inside the house that monitors them, that checks on them, that follows up with them, I don't, I don't think any of these people have given them a hard time, but it is not to Greenleaf or Acacia, it is to two individuals that are doing a similar service.
So in that case, you would lease out the entire property to that group, and they would run it instead of you?
Well, I mean, I'd still would be involved, you know, if they called me and told me, you know, to me, that gives more coverage, because on my other rental property, I'm not going by in the house and saying, hey, did you change air conditioning building, could do this, this, you know, sometimes, but in this case, you've got somebody that is involved, going by checking on, monitoring things, you know, I mean, of course, the other option is, you know, I do just lease it to college students or whoever, of course, that's always an option, but, you know, I think, I mean, but that is, that is the situation.
Sounds like it's thinly veiled threat college students. Any of the research that I mentioned in the next three minutes, I have viewer copies for you all, so it's Bureau of Justice, statistics, and things like that, and I'll apply by night. First point, and I'll be quick, there's an infinite number of studies, all reported in the same conclusions, eighty-three percent is recidivism rate for felons, that includes drugs and alcohol issues, okay? Crimes associated with these sorts of recidivism rates are drug crimes, property crimes, and violent crimes, that's eighty-eight percent of the year risk, that's one study. Sex offenders, I hope there's none included in that group, sixty-seven percent of those recidivate, which I'm always surprised to have anything like that. Sixty-four percent of inmates have mental health concerns, according to this gentleman, a hundred percent of them have mental health concerns, high concern there. Fifty percent of those have dual diagnoses, which are never a good thing. I have degrees of criminal justice psychology, sociology, and my area of expertise is criminal psychology, so I'm looking at that. Halfway houses are plagued with poor supervision because they're largely unregulated, they're for profit, they're not to rehabilitate. George is no exception, and he has copies of that there too. To run one of these facilities, you have to have no convictions in the past three years, not currently under supervision, no sex convictions, no current arrests, which simply means having been caught in three years today. Our neighborhood has lowest crime rate in Dallas, we like to keep it that way. And if BBD is short on police officers, it's our car that goes to another location. We're currently transitioning from retirement community towards what I see as a family community. We have more families with small children moving in, and that's a very positive thing for growth and for the community in Austin. Would you move your family into a neighborhood with a halfway house for felons? I would not. I own my house, I plan on staying there, but if I see a downturn, I will leave, just like a lot of other people, which is a primary problem in Austin City today. I would unequivocally say I really don't want that, and I need to do it.
I've got a good question.
I have a question too.
Would the staff's recommendation of limiting property to two residents in each building, maximum of four residents, total of the debt, condition alleviating your concern?
That means three and a half of those would commit more crimes, very shortly, I believe. Was it just out of a prison, or halfway house, or a relocation facility? No, that would not alleviate it at all. The threat of college students is infinitely better than the population that's going in there. Any more questions?
Yes. What we look at here is land use, and is it appropriate to have a house with two apartments on land, never mind who lives on them? That's not for us to decide, our, what we look at is, is it appropriate to have a house with two apartments in this area? It used to, and it's become nonconforming, so if it hadn't become nonconforming because it was doing some remodel and evicting people, then you could still be doing this. My question is, if there was a condition on here that it be not used as a halfway house, would you be okay with there being a house and two apartments there?
No, that's still lower than the value. It's nonconforming, we're single dwelling, primarily...
It's been nonconforming all along.
Right, we need to be, it's, it's not being used now, so it reverses back to everything else around it, from what I understand, I know what you mean by this, but it does lower the health use of single dwelling houses, there's no doubt about it. Rangers do change the landscape. We see an increase in the Rangers in the community since the downturn, we're on the upturn now, so things are starting to turn around, we're seeing families move in instead of Rangers, I'd like to keep going in that direction. We have a good community, we want to keep that way, and sad to say, but there's help take care of the property and have an investment like on this too. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Next.
Anybody else in opposition?
I live behind R15, and over a year and a half ago, they wanted to build a subdivision, and it was approved, but the streets were too small, so I brought the property that is next to R15 on the right, the dark green, I own a half an acre next to it, so I owned the property right by, I'm just talking about. I remember when that gentleman lived in that apartment, because he had a truck that he cranked up at 5:30 in the morning, every morning with the glass pack, so for two years, I woke up every morning at 5:30. The day you got rid of him was the best day, me buying my neighborhood. I totally agree with what Mr. White said, homeowners are buying, people are buying their houses and want to do the size communities, you got to keep the renters out. I used to live on the West Park Avenue, I didn't move because everyone's house was a college student, six feet. The house in question, the big house, has been chopped up, where three people have individual rooms, if I'm not mistaken. Well, we can't discriminate whether they can have someone in their room with them or not, so that would be six people living in the big house, and if you put two people in each park, that's four, now you've got ten people living on one piece of property. The traffic there is hot, in the right manner, and when it was nonconformed over a year ago, it was orange, meaning that would be the end of the apartment, the buses in the back. I could understand someone taking the house and renovating it, renewing it, or selling it, but that's not what those apartments are for. I doubt that there was a permanent ever pool for those when you got to the map, because you totally got it in a map, there's brand-new appliances and everything.
Well, you don't want to doubt that now, you can go down and find that in a full park.
I didn't know if you did or not, because they're...
We don't want to suppose.
Okay, that's fine, they're totally your fault, that's to be like, that's what you do, that's fine, but our concern is how many people are actually going to live there. We cannot discriminate if someone's going to have a partner, a eight, or be married, you, it's not going to be three people, it's going to be six, and if you got four, it's going to be eight, a little frozen. So I live right behind the property, and I'm totally against it, because if these people are being rehabilitated and they do not have a vehicle, I can assure you, they're going to walk through my backyard to head to Wendy's and the Waffle House, because there are sideboards that's going to take them that way, they're going to take the shortest path, so I'm not for that.
Sir, can you give me your name and address?
Anthony, 317 Crescent Drive. I did buy the property that is adjacent to the one that was R10, remember when you bought the backyard at 316? Right, that's right.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Anybody in opposition?
Give me your name and address for the record, please.
Edford 2805 Northfield Road. I'm just a couple houses down from the property as well. I have two minor children that live with me. The neighborhood is great, I really do love it, I bought my house there, we actually moved there because it became a bad neighborhood, that had gotten broken into twice, and so that safety for my children led me to come to a safer neighborhood. I guess I'm hearing the purpose, possibly for a halfway house, you know, really scares me, the idea that the neighborhood that I used to live in, they would watch when my vehicles would come and go, I'm sure enough, like, they got it since I was uptown, like, they knew, so that's like very scary to think that, you know, they're there around all the time. I prefer it to be residential, absolutely, but if you're saying like a family home, if it was like strictly that, I feel like I would have a problem with it, like, long-term residential type of thing, you know, everybody needs a place to stay like that, but even running, I don't know, that's...
Thank you. Would anybody else in opposition like to speak or answer this?
I would, so if they, if your place comes in, well, I'm fixing to give you some information you've already heard.
Could you give your name and address first, please?
Jonathan, 317, something place, he bought my backyard, basically, so I want to echo everything he said, echo everything she said, and echo everything especially about the kid that she said. If you have a house, a halfway house, I've got two young children, that makes me really nervous, and has me a little bit amped up about the possibilities that come with it. And if something were to happen to her kids or my kids, it's going to be on your conscience, and I don't know if you want that. As far as the Greenleaf thing, when my grandmother passed away at 2500 Dever Drive, we sold it, and the people that leased for Greenleafs, halfway house, have bought it, and they have absolutely ruined. I mean, they've come as close to demolishing a place as you can get without getting a permit to demolish it. I mean, it's, it's pathetic, and I don't want that to my property value, but I especially do not want that to my kids. We moved like her from a cracked neighborhood to one that we thought was going to be safe, we've been there for a year, it's been wonderful. First time in my life, I can leave my doors unlocked, or leave a car unlocked, leave my kids at school, it's out, and not have to worry about it. And a halfway house is just going to take the dump over every bit of that, so I would get...
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in opposition, please?
I actually have to go back to work.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Jim Harold, that's 320, G. Route, and the man, he has done a fantastic job of bringing it out, I could have liked. My question is, how many people are you going to put in the big house in the main, in the main residence? Is that going to be leased out to individuals or families? Or is it already split up into apartment size?
Well, there's five bedrooms in that house, and it is already the least, see, that lets you know how much impact it has, you answered the wrong question. You live next door, of course, you rent your house next to that also, so you are in debt because you're renting property, you know, you rent 322 Eager, and of course, 316 Eager is also a rental house, but anyway, but the truth, Jim Harold, that these people are already in there, and they've been in there for six months, and you didn't, you know they were there, and they not caused you any problems, you're the next door there.
They're in and out, different, different houses, different cars, and I don't know what's in there. I tried to speak to a couple of them in the backyard back there, and they sort of...
Well, they've been told, don't interfere with the neighbors, don't cause them problems, so, and they have, because you know they were there.
I knew they were there.
I know.
What I'm saying, is that going to be a permanent resident, the main house, is that going to be a permanent residence for more than two people?
Oh, sure, I mean, but this is not a two-bedroom house, it's, I don't know, it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred square foot with five, you know, four bedrooms, and then before all of it, they built an additional mother-in-law suite on the back of it, so, you know, it's five bedrooms.
Why didn't you pursue getting this changed before you had the apartments redone? To me, it feels like, it feels like... To me, it feels like, it feels like, um, you're going to just cram this down the neighborhood's throat.
Oh, no.
Okay, regardless of what, if, why didn't you pull a permit?
Well, I...
To get it, to get it rezoned?
Oh.
Before you did not spend all that money?
Because I, you know, I never knew that, like I said earlier, I never knew that, that it was going to become an issue. I, I mean, it, they're label apartments, uh, there were people living in them when I bought them. I had the power on when I moved, when I got my crews in there, put the permit in there, you know, redid the wiring, redid the plumbing, running all around the street. Uh, I mean, y-you know...
But you still didn't ask for a rezoning, you, you spent that money, that's, that's your money, you can do it any way you want to. But you're fixing that house to, uh, house more than just a couple of people.
Oh, I mean, I don't, and, you know, I couldn't deny, I mean, I don't even see where that's an issue. That house, I mean, if I was in the rent business, I don't think, uh, there would be an individual couple, just a husband and wife, coming in and buying that house for five bedrooms. So, I mean, I don't, I don't even know how to really address what you're saying about that.
Well, I'm very firmly against it, I like all, both of their names and things like that. As far as me renting, being the landlord, that home has been my sister and my name. And we rented it to a friend, he has been there nearly fifteen years. Fifteen years and his yards are Mackey's.
I don't have a problem with it.
I have a hard time keeping my yards at Mackey's.
The only thing I was making that comment is because there was people acting like you as a group were against renters. And I would say, well, now I know that's a renter, and you're sitting over there and you're renting the house inside you.
Single.
What? But, but, yeah, I'm not...
Please. I think we've, we've heard your, if, do you have anything else to address to the board as far as your concerns? We want to make sure we hear your concerns, so...
I would like to know how many people are going to live if it goes to their... Three hundred and fifty house.
Right.
How many people are, are going to either, you know, ninety-two or twenty-two? Or how many people are you going to put in the main house?
Okay. Fine, thank you, sir. Do you have some questions?
Sure.
Okay. Sure. Well, if we can hear the rest of the opposition and then we'll come back and try to... Uh, other opposition, is somebody else like you address the board? Thank you, sir.
My name's Vicki Williams, I'm with the twenty-eight six Project Center. I can tell you that I volunteered as a police department Brian Shannon for years. And the city has problems. There's zoning, there's ordinances that say how many cars can you parking lot? Can you park on the grass? Okay, we've never been able to manage that effectively. Okay, this just seems to me to be another case. If the people are not walking, they've got to have some transportation sitting there. Okay, they've got those issues going. We've got school buses that stop up there on Eager Road. A bunch of kids, I don't have to count, I guess we could stand out there and get it now. But the kids get off the bus, they got to walk down the street, there's no sidewalk there. And they got to walk down the side of the street, a walk on the truck, you can get run over, and you go running, seeing traffic. They're going to be there with people who live in these proposed apartments, dwellings, whatever you want to call them, have got to be there. And these people that are coming out of there, it is a halfway house, they're not rehabilitated. It is a halfway house. So it's got to be, there's a five percent, just statistics show, of what can happen. Okay, we don't need that right there. And I think this is just opening the door for more. If this one, in my opinion, I know how the city of Alamosa works. If this one gets out there and gets through, there's nothing to say that these people that live in the heart of Mackey can't come out there and say, "I want to subdivide my house, I want to put apartments in there, and I want to bring these people from Greenleaf and put them there." It, it just keeps, it's like a plague, it just keeps growing. There need to be areas in Alamosa that are specifically for this purpose and keep it in a place where it can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next in opposition?
Yes. Um, I'm Pete Bridges, um, we have a store here.
Uh, sorry, address?
Twenty-nine fourth of Mackey's Road, so we're just writing on the story. And he kind of brought it up, but I want to point out, and I called the negotiation, I checked on this, but if it is going to be a halfway house, which I think that's what the whole issue, sounds like that's where it's headed and that's what already is there. And even though he says, said that there hasn't been any problems, just to say that it's not going to, with the next one that moves in, or the next one that moves in. But what I want to point out is right across the street on Eager Road, on the ends of Funwood Circle, and on the other end of Funwood Circle, there are two bus stops. Like, they're Seeschoolers, Seeschool children. When I went to work last year, when we tired of that, I would pass by and there's crowds of children catching the buses at both those spots. And I'm called, so Seeschooler today. And my next thing is, he doesn't feel his own crushes, he doesn't live there. He's out, he's away from it, he does it, sets it up, but it's other people around that he's living with, not him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in opposition, like, to...
Excuse my voice. Uh, Ashton McLeod, I'm from Eager Road, New York, New York. Uh, I came down with a total of a reminder, I think I still have to one. I see, I see issues from both places. Very glad I'm not sitting in, in Yaw's, okay? Uh, my objection is to have a house. There were apartments there before. I'm not going to stand toe-to-toe with him and argue his feelings are wrong, okay? That's something this one has to decide. Let me ask you a question, what's R fifteen? Single-family residence?
Uh, yes.
Why are we letting a halfway house exist already in a single-family residence? It's asinine that we're standing in a public building with public employees making this argument. It's going to get done, what are we arguing about? Why did it ever happen to begin with? Is my question. Anyway, I, I, I'm not here to make a show. Like I say, I, there's... I've got certain sympathies with this guy, I really do. But all of my neighbors have pointed out something that I think is fair, fair value. And then if this, if, if we do it here, you know, I, I look over at my man down there, I'm like, talk to somebody who knows. It's, out there in that area, people have a head of going in and doing what they want. And they come back and get a permit. And y'all look, okay? So, let's, 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 let's try to find a medium ground here. I don't think a halfway house is a good medium ground. The man's made an investment, he is entitled to return his money. I, I will spend him, I'll have him in time. But just because they're entitled to return their money, don't mean they're entitled to everything. Any of their things, do it. I want to live in the laws of the city of Alamosa. I want to buy it. I was living out there when we were taking the city limit table, I took it all. And I'm here, and I get tired of it, I'll get here.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else in opposition, guys? No? Um, correction, I believe you had some more questions for Tracy.
I have some questions for Tracy. Um... Why is this case here? How is it that we're sitting here in this case? Is this...
A P law case?
Yes. Because it appears that he's been renting this for some time, he should have gotten a P law if it was absent from a year some time ago.
Yes. I'm wanting to defer now.
How is it that we're hearing this case, Mr. Martin?
Uh, Matt, if I can, before we start.
Yes. There's a lot of...
I've been running around the neighborhood for years. One of my high school buddies grew up there. Henry Davis's family lived there. Those duplexes have been there for forty-plus years. I don't know when they were built, but they've been there for a long time. Which, when they were in the county, which it was, it was a nonconforming grandfather-in-use basement, if I understand it right. And he has requested that he can go back to having a duplex and a single-family house. My question then, and I may be, you circle you, I'm sorry. We're here to determine what they can put in there as far as the number of units. But do we really have the power to say it cannot be this or it can't be that? I don't know, that falls within our jurisdiction, does it?
I don't know the question, huh?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we can say it can't be a halfway house or something like that. I don't know that we have the power to limit, do we?
All right, there's a lot of misinformation, a lot of extra discussion going on that is not going to lead into a request for...
That's, that's what I'm saying, what...
As Tracy said, this half report is absolutely correct. This is the request for a P law approval, you know, with that, it stands for. And it's to reestablish the use of that area building as a duplex, well, two dwelling units, one building, the opposite of us. Um, as previously used for many years as that nonconforming, I mean, the law was in the county under R fifteen seventy in the county. The city annexed it in two thousand and six, and the annex probably started as part of the island's annexation. It was annexed as-is, so the nonconformity continued because city R fifteen seventy was not allowed with us. So, that rules nonformal. When the use ceases for twelve months or more, or over a year now, then these cannot be reestablished except in conforming current regulations. R fifteen of single-family residence, it also allows an accessory dwelling, singular, with a special approval. It's not allowed with us. Free dwelling units on one parcel, by definition, is multifamily. Even though it looks a little bit different, which is why these conditions are working the way they are. And SAG's idea to keep it under control in terms of density and other people and so on. The use of the overall property is not on the agenda for the center of the community. The use, as SAG has found to be, is a single-family residence. The building in question is the rear yard building, the accessory building. Um, whether or not it's halfway house, is it, they've planned to have visited the site. Um, we've heard all the rumors as well. I, for one, fully expected to find a halfway house already in operation. Uh, we toured the facility, asked a lot of questions, did a lot of thinking. And SAG, for what it's worth, at the moment, has made the determination, I mean, buildings used as a single-family residence, not your typical residence, but is not by the definition of halfway house or transitional housing facility. Those are separate line items, or as I said, have separate definitions, separate rules. Under the current R fifteen zoning, the property is not eligible for either. It first require a recent, and then probably intentional use. Whole separate process, whole separate issue. If someone disagrees with SAG's finding and interpretation of the code, there is an appeals process for that. Separate application and advertising, you will only come to it in jury. It has a whole separate issue, whole separate discussion, and it's not what's on your agenda today. What's on your agenda today is a P law, the use, reuse of the building in the rear yard. There's a lot of discussion about halfway house. SAG is a little bit concerned that it might transition into a halfway house. Um, but not taking a whole lot of evidence to do that. But based on how the residents come to be there, a lack of required license, voluntary residents and so forth, it is a single-family residence, a pretty good size. I have a new house, almost three thousand square feet. You had asked this quarter about the condition of the number of people. That it's no more than two residents per duplex building. Remember, this is the one that came to the duplex, not the main house. Um, the duplex mentioned on our survey, barely a thousand square feet, two bedroom units. Um, R fifteen allows us an accessory dwelling with a special process. When I look at a single-family property, from the road, R fifteen zoning surrounding pattern, primary use is certainly single-family. This building in the back is not visible from the street, and I would say barely visible from outside, outside walk around the building. Large property, but I would not want it to become populated with a lot of people that it starts moving to an apartment complex more than a single-family residence with an accessory use in the back. So, the way I look at it, an accessory dwelling probably would be a review and approve there. This is SAG's the next three unit that's already there, all large lots. From a density perspective, um, neighbor and a half, three dwelling units, that's an average of a half acre per dwelling. R fifteen zoning will allow greater density, am I right? So if this were a smaller lot, SAG would probably have a different opinion.
I have so many questions. I still want to know, why is this case here? This gentleman seems to be renting the place now.
He's renting the house.
The house, now, okay. So, are you going to answer that question? Um...
There's no issue with the house, then a house, then a new house.
The house, as he said, is in law apartment on the back, so is it a duplex?
The, what was on the back, and I look at the tax file as part of the property research. Once upon a time, the main building was classified itself as a duplex. And when I looked at it, I thought, that's what it would be. When I visited the site, I was looking for the other road, you know, the main building, I've already seen duplex. Walked all through there, um, it is, I think it was a duplex many, many years ago. And I think it was his predecessor that did the changes, but it got combined back into the one. You can see where the addition is, um, you can kind of see where the kitchen might have been, but it has long not been a kitchen, it just has an extra wall to the outside. It's really a house with extra women to put in the back. It functioned as one dwelling unit, all internal access, one kitchen, and the house. So, I would not want it to go back to it much. That's not him, not part of your agenda.
Is, does the city have a limit on the number of unrelated people that can live together, a single...
We have it in the code, but it is not constitutionally enforceable. We have a definition for family. And it's from many, many years ago, before there were certain court cases that prohibit the local governments from defining a family. Only thing we can do as a local government is address the symptoms. When people in the audience make reference to the residential parking area of the district, some of their cars can be parked in the yard. And that's the only thing, only tool that we have to monitor.
And the only thing that can be done about that, someone has to complain, is complain generally...
Or the city marshal sees the property, so he actually has a running database of license plate numbers, if they have anything. Um, they're out looking around, probably looking more at properties close to campus, in the Eker Road. Um, but they do respond to calls. And the beginning of each semester, for reissue, constantly deductive violations of a little more active enthusiasm. But that's been the only thing for ten years.
You can't limit the number of occupants to the number of bedrooms?
Not as a family, if you want to try and put a limit of occupants in on the building, you can try it back in city, I'm not convinced it's enforceable. Um, or the legal staff here, we all get to weigh in on that.
Well, I mean, I'm just wondering, could you put thirty people in that building?
Then you start getting into other codes that do not keep. Um, life safety codes, fire codes, things of that nature, and that's relative to the city. Um, legally, I don't know how much the building can hold, given its size, probably a lot of people in terms of raw, uncommitted service.
I would think the city conservancy had the ability to enforce the limitation of the number of occupants. I mean, I can't imagine that there's, it's, it's unconstitutional that the city would create some sort of law that, that would limit it. And, and the only, your only solution would be to allow fire codes or something like that.
Which can produce large numbers. Consider some families that have ten or twelve kids.
So what did they do about all the college students? I mean, how do you, how do you limit? How do you limit it? I mean, isn't always a concern that, uh, that, that there could be a broth or something, I mean, I've always heard that. Or that there be a sorority house in one of these houses, and you just have, uh, twenty, thirty... or that there'd be a sorority house in one of these houses, and you just have, uh, twenty, thirty college students living in one house?
And then it becomes a parroty house, a sorority house, a little bit of use.
So, how do you regulate that? How do you regulate, how do you keep all these college students from living in one house?
Well, it is, I would say, if you're creating a nuisance by noise, you're practically parking something other than a single-family use of the property that is in for, which are things that you can use.
So, right now-
You're determining who's related to who, and who has a right to be there as a family unit, if it's a single family, there's a lot of piece off of that.
But the code still has those regulations in there?
There's a petition in there, indicating that maybe some of the kids all might come along, so. That was a decision made two years ago, and it has not changed yet.
Matt, you spoke to the fact that you have inspected and walked through, and that at this point, you do not think that the resident, that the people renting the residence qualify technically as a halfway house or a transitional home, per code?
Correct, per our definition of-
But, but you also said that it could easily trend, it could cross that line. How do you, if that happens, how do you know that, or how do we know that? Is it, is it again complaint-based, um, a complaint has to come in, that all of a sudden you go back and look at it again? Or, the reason I'm asking is because other situations, somebody goes and puts a boarding house into a residential home, they have to file a business license to put, to put that boarding house in that residential home, that business license then brings it back to your attention. What here, what is the thing here that will launch it to your attention?
A variety of things, something to trigger us to go with the facility, to investigate licensing, perhaps approval for a state license, such facilities would be required at, um, or just very odd that we can make that ourselves to look. Um, part of the reason we were there was talking to current tenant, um, in the facility, operating, how they were operating. The issue was how people came to be there, they were not sent there by an institution, they're not fresh out of an institution to live there. It's typical with a halfway house, there'd be people who came in prison system, or a rehabilitation facility, that's not defined basically. These people are very voluntary, and they have been in a halfway setting previously, that's not the purpose of being in this facility. If it becomes that, where people are referred here by an institution, then they start meeting these evidences, and that becomes a disinformation.
And this property, if I understand correctly, is not appropriate for a halfway house or a transitional-
Correct, as the definition is under R fifteen, a halfway house requires R six, eleven, or higher, with the condition it is, transitional housing facility requires an R N seven or higher, with the condition it is. The property is eligible for other purposes, and if re-zoned, then eligible for condition use, and that's not what they're asking. And it's a whole separate process, whole separate-
The whole decision today is, can they use the back apartment?
Correct, can they reuse the duplex building in the rear yard that's existing as a duplex? And all the things are allowed within the duplex, only thing SaaS is suggesting is to put some limitations on that particular building. And above for that stuff.
Right, we need to keep in mind, we are not talking about the big house, we are talking about the duplex only.
But it's a part, it's a part of the whole, I mean, it's all part of one property, so I don't see why we can't limit it. I can't see why we can't limit it all. I mean, you know, we're, we're looking at this one parcel, there's two buildings on one parcel, and there's been a, a recommendation that we condition, whatever we end up doing to, to limit the number of occupants in the duplex. I don't see why we can't limit the number in the big house too. I mean, you know, it's all one parcel of land, this is all coming before us as one, uh, variance request, do you disagree with that, Matt?
You, you can, anything's legal to judge, you can try. I mean, it was something I thought about, that I knew as a same-family residence, that was not in the past, or was it required? And I called, that's not maybe down that road for the main building, who knows its current outcome?
By how many digits?
Five, that I saw, and it's five bedroom house, which, you know, I think a number of households around town, and a lot of that, but, you know, there's, you can't control that. Unfortunately, I think it's the one we do it.
You, technically, because we are addressing just the duplex here, we could limit the total number of people within the duplexes themselves, or the total number of people on the property.
I think because the applicant is coming to you, asking for permission to reuse an existing building, I think that opens the door to put some reasonable conditions on such a property. And then beyond what they've asked, including condition on something else, is shaking your ground.
But was it determined that over a year ago, it was considered a non-conforming building, the two apartments, it's been over a year? That's the last meeting we had.
Please, I'm sorry, technically, I were, so, I'm sorry.
And just to clarify that, and clear up some of the confusion, this is not a recent matter. There is no request to re-zone the property on that report, uh, there is no request before you about the use of the property as a halfway house or anything else. It is simply reusing an existing duplex structure in backyard as a duplex, it was a non-conforming use as a duplex. Um, it ceases operation, no different than a non-conforming accessory dwelling in the backyard, if it were just one, or when unoccupied, for one, I mean, you live in the back end, it'd be the same situation. This is a little bit different, it's two dwellings in one building. The flip side is, it's a lot of, and there are-
Any other questions for staff? All right, back to my- Um-
I have a question.
I'm sorry, uh, does, does the board feel like they have enough information to make their decision now? And so, would somebody like to make a motion? Or do we have other questions? I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment about what I, I, I think that he, he bought it, that it was in use for many, many years as a duplex, and I, I think he purchased the property, he's upgraded, and I think he should be allowed to, to get his, um, P lock certificate, but I do think that there should be conditions put on it, and I agree with the recommendations that the staff made, but I also think that, um, it, it's within this board's power to impose additional regulations, because it's all, it's, it's one parcel of land, um, you know, I, I, I think we should also restrict the number of occupants in the main residence, and I would say limited to the number of bedrooms, so, I would say, I, I like the idea of approving the request as presented with staff's conditions, and then also add an additional condition of, um, limit the number of occupants in the main house to five.
Is that your motion?
No, I mean, I'm just putting it out there for discussion, if anybody won't, if anybody disagrees, or does anybody have a better idea?
The problem I have with putting a condition on the number in the main house is because if this property were to be sold to someone else, and they had a family of, somewhere with ten kids, and they wanted to rent out the apartments for extra income, they wouldn't be able to, because it has this condition, that no more than one person could do that.
Yeah, but I think they could, they know.
They had to come.
They know comments who bought the property that had the condition. So, we said, they'd have knowledge.
I don't know that they would know of the conditions that, or restrictions that this board put on it, because that's not gonna be anywhere-
Doesn't go in the deed.
It doesn't go in the deed, it's not recorded anywhere, yes, Matt?
Just clarify before we get to the part now, P locks are recorded before us, and are in the deed records for this property. It's one of the requirements of the process. Um, on your comment, one way to implement that, which may be a good idea to clarify, of the approval that's before you is to reuse the duplex as a duplex or not, as a condition-